We are tuning in remotely. Also, we have council members here and who's? And McNair are joining us by phone. And again, prayers to Councilmember Thompson for the passing in the home-going services for his mother. So if we can keep him in prayer. At this time, as we, as we talk about prayer, we would ask that Councilman, former Councilmember and Commissioner, Christopher Davis, Pastor Davis, if he would come to the podium. We ask that all would please stand for the prayer immediately following Pledge of Allegiance in unison.
Good evening, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council, beautiful city. Let's bow our heads. Gracious Father, in the name of Jesus, we thank you for this day you've given us. It's a day we've never had before. It's a day we'll never have again. So God, we pray that we've lived it according to your will and your purpose. Continue to bless us with wisdom, knowledge, and understanding. Bless our energies, our endeavors, and our best wishes upon this city and its leadership. Bless our law enforcement, our military, and all of those who serve on behalf of mankind. In Jesus Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which sustains one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, Commissioner Davis, former Councilmember, good to see you, Pastor. I know you are here in your pastoral duties tonight, but tell us as you prepare to make the special announcement for an upcoming event, you want to tell us a little bit about yourself, your ministry?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, Council, city. Glad to be back in these hallowed halls and before these great people. It's always my honor to stand before our city and to serve our city. Force of Life Ministries is a thriving, growing, multifaceted, multi-dimensional faith community here in Fayetteville who's consistently focusing on helping people grow, transition from level to level in life, and just live their faith out forward in the community. We've been here since 2012. We've had the opportunity to grow and work with the city and the great people in this community. And we just hope that all of you continue to pray for us and work with us as we continue to serve in our best ways possible on behalf of Christ. So that's what Force of Life is, and we're glad to be with you guys tonight.
We appreciate it. Tell us about your upcoming event.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, if I may. The Man to Man Empowerment Conference, I have to give credit, where credit is due, comes from a slight bit of envy from the women's empowerment movement over the last four or five years, from Mayor Pro Tem Jensen, Ms. Banks-McCallum, and all the women used to get together in the summer. They would have a Women's Empowerment Week. And for years, I thought I brought it up, I was kind of jealous that the men never got together to do anything men empowerment in the city. And so now that I'm off council, it gave me an opportunity to kind of drill down on something that I feel is very important. And so last year, 2022, was the first year coming out of COVID, that we facilitated, myself and a group of visionary leaders. Here with me tonight, Bishop Johnny Brooks, one of Walmart's corporate leaders in the city, and some other pastors, organizations, nonprofits, business owners. The Man to Man Conference was designed to bring men together across the region. It was designed to facilitate healing, growth, and maturity in men while encouraging male mentorship and saving generations of young men and developing men who are growing in life. All three pillars are connection, collaboration, and commitment. Connection is built on 133 Psalms, when unity is important. Collaboration talks about men agreeing with each other and working together. And commitment is, if you acknowledge and give your plans to the Lord, he'll establish them. And so helping men grow, heal in this community, I think serves the community. Families are healed, communities are healed. The very infrastructure of our society is built on men who in their faiths serve God and serve each other. And so if you'd like to join the Man to Man Empowerment Conference, just easily find Eventbrite, Man to Man Empowerment. At each of your desks, I've left, I've left an actual advertisement, a list, and some brochures. I'll leave it there for the city. November 1 through 4, Fayetteville State University is our partner this year. November 1 through 4, we'll be up there. We'll partner with the Toaster Initiative, which is a young, youth, male organization that helps entrepreneurship, we're mentoring them. So come be a part of our events. Look for me in the community. I'm Chris Davis, 803-546-1047. Council, thank y'all for supporting it, and the city for allowing me to come publicly and bring this out.
Now, Commissioner Davis, I know you're a very intelligent young man. You know, all good ideas come from women. You knew that, right?
That's why I had to give them their credit first, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, all right, all right. All right. Council, we'll move to proclamations. We have a couple. Would ask for, I guess, Mr. Jim Rutherford and the Code Enforcement Team, if they would meet me at the podium. Mayor Pro Tem will read the announcement.
A great team for sure, Mr. Mayor. Looks like the A-team up there. The proclamation. Whereas code enforcement officers provide for safety and welfare of the citizens throughout the city of Fayetteville through enforcement of local codes or ordinances facing various issues of building, zoning, housing, health, and life safety. And whereas code enforcement officers often have a challenging and demanding role, and often do not receive recognition for the job that they do in improving living and working conditions for residents and businesses of our local community. And whereas code enforcement officers are dedicated and competent professionals who share the goals of preventing neighborhood deterioration, enhancing and ensuring safety, and preserving property values through knowledge and application of housing, zoning, and nuisance codes and ordinances. And whereas the American Association of Code Enforcement proclaimed the month of October 2023 as National Code Compliance Month, and call upon municipalities and communities to join in recognizing and expressing their appreciation for the dedication and service by the individuals who serve as our code enforcement officers. Now therefore, Mitch Colvin, Mayor of the city of Fayetteville, North Carolina, and on behalf of this city council and our 208,000 residents, do hereby honorably proclaim the month of October 2023 as National Code Compliance Month. Witness whereof, the mayor has set his hand and caused the great seal of the city of Fayetteville to be affixed this fifth day of September 2023. Congratulations. David Scott. Mr. Mayor will be presenting a proclamation to recognize indigenous people inhabited throughout the country. All right. Proclamation. Whereas indigenous people inhabited this country long before the colonization of the Americas began, and whereas North Carolina is home to more than 122,000 American Indians and has eight historic tribes: Coheary, Eastern Band of Cherokee, Halewa-Sapone, Lumbee, Maheron, Okanichi Band of the Sapone, Sapani, and Wakama-Sinewen. And whereas the indigenous people have built vibrant and diverse cultures, safeguarding land, language, spirit, knowledge, and traditions across the generations. And whereas the city of Fayetteville, North Carolina honors and respects the heritage and the culture of our American Indian tribes and people. And whereas we value the many contributions made to technology, medicine, science, philosophy, and arts in our society and community through indigenous people's history, culture, knowledge, and labor. And whereas the city of Fayetteville recognizes the strength and resilience of the indigenous people and honor the tribal nations that continue to thrive today. Now therefore, Mitch Colvin, Mayor of the city of Fayetteville, North Carolina, and on behalf of this city council, do hereby honorably proclaim October 9th in the year 2023 to be in honor of Indigenous People Day. And we encourage our citizens to recognize and celebrate the many indigenous communities and cultures that are part of our city and our state. And witness whereof, the mayor has heretofore set his hand, caused the great seal of the city of Fayetteville to be affixed this ninth day of October 2023. Mayor Colvin.
Get my little notes here. Thank you, Mayor. City Council members, I'm David Scott, proud employee of the city of Fayetteville, but most importantly, a proud member of the Lumbee Tribe of North Carolina. I stand before you with immense gratitude and pride as I received the proclamation on behalf of our indigenous communities in Fayetteville. I want to give a special thanks to our city and our city council members for recognizing this special day. We, as indigenous people, gather to celebrate our existence and rich heritage and tradition. I profoundly, I am profoundly proud to declare that I am still here, standing tall on this day of significance. But before I end, I have to give thanks to our ancestors, because without them and their willpower and resilience, we will not be where we are today. Happy Indigenous Peoples' Day.
All right. Well, thank you so much. And I do want to give a quick note about Councilwoman Brenda McNair's, the passing of her brother. So she's certainly be in our prayers as well, to Councilwoman McNair. Councilmember Mario Benevente, you had something?
Yes, Mayor Colvin. Briefly, I brought to mention earlier, this Saturday, if folks are looking for the best show in town, October 14th, Gotham City is going to be an occasion at FSU, where all the marching bands in the city will be coming out. Some of the best marching bands, some of the best HBCUs in the state are going to be performing as well, including Hampton University, Fayetteville State, North Carolina A&amp;T, and of course, the NCCU Sound Machine. So folks need something great to do, October the 14th. Start time is at 11:00 a.m.
Thanks, sir. Councilmember Banks-McCallum, and then Ingram. All right, Councilmember Ingram.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I would like for, if any members present that attended the Faith in Blue Community March Against Violence, if you attended, could you please stand, please? I wanted to just take a moment and thank those individuals for attending this weekend as a part of the Faith in Blue Week, as we took a stand against violence and violent crime in our communities, most specifically in the community that I currently live in, which is Massey Hill. We were able to do three things. And I would ask that you visit the, the social media to see exactly what those three things were. But most importantly, we wanted to make it aware that we care about our community, and we are working hard to address all concerns of our community. And most importantly, coming together. There was a statement made that we wanted the police to be outnumbered, and I think that came directly from them. And in that regard, they were. And so to see the community show up anytime for each other makes me proud. It makes me honored to say that, that you care, you truly care, because we are now seeing everyone show up and being a part of the change that we truly want to see in our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilmember Banks-McCallum, you have your mic situated.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to invite the community to a memorial dedication for our former Mayor Pro Tem Ted Moan. That will be taking place October 15th from 3:00 to 4:30 p.m. at the Bill Chris Center. Thank you. Bill Chris Center at October 15th, on October 15th, from 3:00 to 4:30 p.m. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Certainly keep all the families in prayer of those who have recently suffered a loss in the community. All right, councilors, we move to item 5.0, City Manager Report. Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Jennifer. Mayor, as a sheriff, we do publish a weekly City Managers Newsletter. I would invite the public, if you are not getting that already, if you would go to the city of Fayetteville's webpage. At the top of the page, it's an opportunity for you to sign up. I think as well, Councilmember Ingram, isn't it also Indigo Moon Film Festival this weekend?
Yeah, okay. Yes, it is Indigo Moon Festival, Film Festival this weekend. And if you, if you drove coming this way downtown, you will have already seen the nice spotlight. We have, well, they have some great films lined up. If you're interested in attending, we hope that you do attend. They're at different venues across downtown. And if you're interested in volunteering, you can visit indigomoonfilm, indigo moonfilmfest.com, or go on Facebook as well. We are very, very excited for this. It's a great turnout every year. Thank you, City Manager.
Thank you. All right. As we move to agenda approval, Councilmember Benevente, you had something?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I move that we amend the consent agenda to add an item 7.10. I'd like to ask that we direct our staff to take the appropriate measures in seeking out release of body cam footage as it relates to an incident involving the shooting of Mr. Artese.
So just to clarify the motion, you're motioning that council would consider authorizing the city attorney manager's office, relevant parties, to prepare the paperwork to request the court's petition?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. Is there a second to the motion? Sec. Yes, ma'am.
I just wanted to clarify that that section of the agenda is the consent agenda. So we may want to look somewhere else to add that. Maybe...
Does that matter?
Yes, because it needs to be a three-fourth vote for the amendment as opposed to a regular majority vote for the consent.
Right. No, I think his motion was to add it, and then we'll come back and hit the consent section. So his motion was to add it. So if it passes, then we're going to add it as a consent item.
So he wants to add it to the consent agenda?
So the first motion is to see if council will amend the agenda. And then when they amend it, the number placement would go under consent, and then there would be another vote to approve the consent or not.
If we're going to amend the agenda, there should be eight votes to amend the agenda?
Right.
If you would like to put it on consent, that's fine, but it would just need to be the vote for the amendment first.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. All right. So it's a motion by Councilmember Benevente, a second by Councilmember Hodros, and Councilmember, I mean, Ms. Jennifer, we have on the line, Herr and McNair. Had a question, Councilmember? All right. Counsel, any discussion on the motion to amend? As the attorney stated, it would take eight to, for this to go. All right. Look to you for your votes. You had a question? All right. Councilmember McNair?
Green.
Councilmember Herr?
Green, sir.
All right. So that is 9-0? All right. That is unanimous to add it. Okay. So it is, now will be considered item 7.10 under the consent. So is the motion to approve consent? All right. It's a motion by Council? All right. It's a motion by Councilmember Benevente to approve consent. Was that a second? Councilmember Hodros, second it? Yeah, we are. So we'll go back to the buttons, guys. So second by Councilmember Hodros. All right. Counsel, any discussion on the motion for consent? All right. Look to you for your vote. Councilmember Herr?
That's a green, sir.
Councilmember McNair?
That's green for me, too.
All right. All right. So that motion carries, was it eight to one? Those voting in opposition, did you have that, madam? Okay. All right. Motion carries. All right. Moving to public forum.
Mayor Colvin?
Yes.
I'm sorry about all that. I just want to make sure, did we do item 6.0 approval of the agenda?
We did. That was that motion to add.
And then we added it to the consent.
So it was approval, yeah, it was approval of the agenda motion with the amendment to add item 7.01, and then we came back and did consent.
Yes, sir. I just want to make sure I get that.
That our local government cares enough to listen. Fayetteville Pack is particularly grateful for the way you took the people's opinions into consideration and funneled the funds into projects and programs that will improve and regain the trust between the community and you, the elected officials. We'd also like to acknowledge the dedicated commitment of our ARPA North Carolina State Partners who diligently seek ways to improve the overall inclusive quality of life for all North Carolinians. Once again, we thank you, Mayor Kovan and your staff, for a job well done. Together, we ensure that the city of Fayetteville remains America's can-do city. And with that, and with that being said, we will present you with an award at a later date. And I do encourage everyone to go to amazon.com and search for the documentary that was made through ARPA. Thank you for your time and your work and what you're doing here. Thank you.
Thank you all. That is very kind, and it's a community effort, and thank you for your part that you play in the community. Ms. Greggs and others, you are very adamant about making sure that, you know, we are accountable and transparent, and we thank you for that as well. Madam Clerk.
Our next speaker is Mr. Jose Cardona.
Mr. Cardona, how are you?
Doing good, sir. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, and people here present, and those who are watching on TV. My name is Jose I. Cardona. I live at 233 Addison Street in Fayetteville, North Carolina. I attend one of the biggest churches that have been around here for 239 years called the McPierce Presbyterian Church. We follow the book, we go by the book, and we do nothing but the book. Today, I've come before you to let you know about the plans that you have for the children's curfew, which I don't think is right. I don't think that my 11 grandchildren should suffer for what some other children in this town are doing, who are not being watched, who are not being supervised, and so forth and so on. This city, the can-do city, that nothing good happens after 12 o'clock, okay, is going to punish my children. We have, we have two ladders in this city, the ladder of success and the ladder of crime. The ladder of success, you guys don't worry about it. The ladder of crime is the one that we gotta put our foot on it. We gotta catch these young men that go up that ladder, first step, second step, and we gotta grab them. The police officer, Mr. Chief, Mr. Braden, was really upset because you guys didn't get the message. He bought you an option, an option that you could have said or not. He also wanted you guys two together come up with a solution. Nobody came up with a solution at all. Now, there is, I just gave the clerk a thing called the Tar Heel Challenge. Tar Heel Challenge been around for 20 years. It's non-paid by you guys, it's state-funded. You got the guy, you give him a choice. You either go to this, or you go to jail. What's gonna happen? I need to know if any of you read the newspaper on the last election where many of you was annotated as having a problem with police. How many of you would raise your hand and say, "I never had a problem with the police"? While we worried about this young man killing themselves, we have a place called Planned Parenthood that's killing thousands of your people or your children of your future. Not a word. It's okay to go in and kill people. Innocent children are being killed. Ladies and gentlemen, a great man named Arthur Luther King said these words, "You cannot fight darkness with darkness. You gotta put some light on the thing." You cannot fight hate with hate. You gotta put a little love to it. I ask you, put a little love in our children. Get into these schools, they're free. Get into military academy, even if we have to pay for it. You guys do not take any action at all in our schools. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Ms. Lisa Loft House.
Good evening, Ms. Loft House.
Hi, my name's Lisa Loft House, and I live at 236 Viking Drive in Dino's area. So, first time being here, I really appreciate everything the City Council's doing to try to combat violence in our community. I'm the president of Organizing Against Racism, Cumberland County, and we have some representatives here. And we, as a board, stand united against the curfew. We think that there are many alternatives out there that would help reduce violence in our community. One of our board members did some research on traffic stops across the state, focusing on citations, black males versus white males statewide. White males are more likely to be stopped than black males by about 38%. In Fayetteville, it's the opposite. 68% of black males are stopped and cited versus white males, and we feel that if the curfew is put in place, these numbers would go even higher. So, we, as a board, and I don't know the procedure, but I have a letter here from our board to the City Council.
You give it to the clerk. Yes, ma'am.
Stating alternatives to the program. So, we believe that there are violence interrupter programs that could be put in place where we've put the Shot Spotters in various communities and recreation centers, where we could have people who are trained in nonviolence and learning how to better, have better conflict resolutions. And then I had one other thing to say here. So, we also feel that there could be supplemental job training, restorative justice, more green spaces, activities that promote training people on how to resolve their differences in each community rec center. And so, we fully support and hope that you will fully support the Office of Community Safety, because this is the most important action in putting all of this in place, because the person who runs the Office of Community Safety can put these organizations together, nonprofits, the city, the county, to come together instead of putting all this pressure on our police department. So, I really appreciate everything you're doing. I appreciate being able to speak today, and I hope that you will definitely have the public hearing and come up with alternatives to the curfew. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chalinko Hurst.
Mr. Hurst, good evening.
Good evening. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the council. Thank you for the opportunity for coming to speak. Once again, my name is Chalinko Hurst. I would also like to give thanks for those on the City Council who provided the funds, retrieved the funds for that resource center, even though that has already been addressed by Ms. Elliott. I have a couple of suggestions, because I toured the facility, I believe, about 30 days ago, and it's underserved, because I spoke to the young lady who's the manager there on site and a few of the citizens that it's supposed to serve. The lack of notice for those who we're trying to assist, my suggestion for that is that we have a concentration of homeless individuals downtown, and we have a whole lot of telephone poles and various businesses, just a printout, so these citizens, especially that live behind the gas stations, which I service through my, one of my business services, so they know what times the facility is open, just a regular piece of paper, just attach it to the telephone poles downtown, so they know the services that are available for them. That's one. The second thing, if it is all possible, for some form of transportation to transport these individuals, because during the summer, I don't know if y'all noticed it or not, we had citizens sleeping on the sidewalk downtown, and the resource center was like three blocks away. They didn't even know it was open. They didn't know about the cooling centers that was provided by council and county commissioners also. They didn't know they had access to that also. So, we need to get notice out, whether it be through the radio, because I noticed quite a few candidates have advertisements on the radio. If we can do that, we can go ahead and put up some paper notices on these telephone poles and also public information through the radio service. The second thing I would also like to bring attention to that you may have missed, approximately about a month and a half ago, one of our individuals was able to circumvent, because people, two members sought to tilt the scales of justice on the individual who was murdered on Sky Bowl, January the 3rd, I believe, of last year. And two jury members was down at the courtroom, and they were plotting a way to come out with a lesser verdict, dismissed the charges. And the way the law is written in North Carolina, if we wouldn't have had an assistant private investigator there, justice would not have been served, and I'm very thankful. Lastly, the scales of justice, and I'd like to commemorate also and give thanks for what Ms. Banks said concerning the Ted Moon thing. Oh, that's my time.
That's your time.
Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Hurst.
Mr. Sean McMillan.
Good evening, Mr. McMillan.
Good evening. Sean McMillan, 6224 Golden Rain Drive. Like to echo calls made by Organizing Against Racism, Mr. Cardonius, NAACP, the ACLU, and numerous others to fully reject the youth curfew. You've heard enough. You'd be foolish to not listen. I'd also like to call on the council to launch a full investigation as to the in custody death of Lawrence Artist. According to police reports and initial media reports, he shot himself a week ago while handcuffed in police custody. We need transparency and accountability to include a full accounting and update of his death to the public. A publicly released sentinel report as the Attorney General Stein urged following the police homicide of Jada Johnson. And lastly, a follow-up to the community after the release of autopsy and the report of examination by the medical examiner. I urge every council member and anyone listening to research the police homicide of Joshua Oxendine here in Fayetteville in September of 2019, just to look at what corruption and cover-up looks like. We should not repeat the mistakes of the past. City of you reported that Mr. Artist succumbed to his injuries and passed away on Friday, October 6th. The community has been waiting for an update on his status since last Monday. We expected that update to come from the FPD. Chief Braden, we expected you to show Lawrence Artist, his family, his friends, the same dignity that you showed to folks who passed away after initial reports of hospitalization. We expect their transparency, but unfortunately, this city, time and time again, has shown an aversion to honesty and transparency. In addition to all the things I previously named, I also call on this council to immediately halt and rescind the Shot Spoter program before any other lives are taken. I remind all voters that this is what happens at the intersection of inequality and poverty. It's not something you can arrest or kill your way out of. I urge everyone to vote. All candidates are not created equal, and neither are all council members. On the last public forum prior to the November 7th election, I urge you to use your vote to cast out the elected officials who voted to install Shot Spoter, when they were cautioned that it could lead to unnecessary injury and death of Fayetteville residents. All candidates are created equal. Please vote, but don't vote on name recognition or party affiliation. Please elect council members who will openly reject the proposed youth criminalization curfew in any form. Ride for those who have repealed the no camping ordinance that criminalizes those who are experiencing homelessness. Please elect members who will speak openly and truthfully about the drivers of crime, poverty, and inequality, and please use your vote to reject the council members before you tonight who have been cheerleaders for dangerous performative measures that lead to overpolicing and death. I urge you to use your vote to support council members who will support and not criminalize our youth. Let's elect elected officials who will choose humanity over ill-fated technology, love over indifference, then we could truly be able to see what the city can do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Ms. Angela Malloy.
Good evening, Ms. Malloy.
Good evening. Let me take my glasses off. They are glasses, I'm not trying to be cool. I want to place my purse that I have here. It says, "Protect Black People." I want to be able to have you see this. Angela Malloy, 131 Hay Street. Transparency. We all use this word in various settings. We all assume that everyone understands what that means when it is used. We just had an incident in our community that once again involved our Fayetteville Police Department under the leadership of Chief Braden. Transparency that resulted, transparency is what's needed, and what happened was the result of the death of a handcuffed individual in police custody. Transparency means that when there is an officer-involved shooting or shooting in police custody, that there are protocols in place to provide the community with timely, accurate, unbiased information that isn't phrased in a narrative of influencing the details involving the officers. Transparency in this most recent incident means to make sure that the scene is secure, evidence is collected properly to give a full picture of what happened that doesn't solely rely on officer accounts. It means that the officer's hands were tested for gunpowder. It means that their guns were immediately seized for testing to see if any of them were fired. It means that the victim's gun is tested for residue and fingerprints, because that shows that the full picture is being sought and not a biased one. It involves a systemic process that includes the request to release body cam footage immediately. Another narrative that has been heard is that Shot Spoter seems to work because it got guns off our streets. What it proves is that Shot Spoter will increase unnecessary shootings of black folks as a result of its use. The accepted plan to get guns off the streets should not be that folks need to be shot while in handcuffs or in police custody. Continuing to blindly support a police department whose main solutions to systemic violence is to make more arrests and create policies that will affect blacks at a higher rate mean more black folks will disproportionately be harmed. This is why we need to find out what is needed to get a Director of Office of Community Safety hired. We cannot afford to delay this. I'm getting really tired of the narrative of black on black crime. We can do two things at one time. We can focus on what needs to be done in our community and also hold our police departments accountable. It's just like if you, many of us have children and grandchildren in school. If they are misbehaving in school, but something happens that they are at the hands of harm, we're not going to go after and make sure that the teachers are held accountable just because they're misbehaving in school. And that's what we're doing when we say that we cannot hold our police department accountable while also making sure that we address the issues in our community. I tell physicians across the state all the time that if it's change that we want to see, then change comes from growth. The only way to experience growth is through experiencing some growing pains. If your goal is to create change while making folks comfortable in their harm, change will never happen. We have to be bold to see the true change that we all want to see. It is voting time. Be bold and go vote.
Thank you, Ms. Malloy.
Mr. Robert Walls. Mr. Robert Walls. Mr. Joseph Wheeler.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, good evening, council. So, tonight, I just want to speak on the date that's coming up tomorrow, which is World Homeless Day, and I would like to invite all of you to join between 4:00 and 7:00 on Facebook Live, Community Awareness Alliance, and the Homeless Assembly to take part in World Homeless Day by offering insight and, to offer insight on the future of what homelessness means and could look like here in this city. And that's between 4:00 to 7:00 on Facebook Live. In addition, there will be food being passed out in various locations across the city. Also, I would like to mention and invite everybody to come out on Saturday to the Walmart parking lot on Murkison Road, which is the old side of the Walmart, to participate in the farmer's market from 8:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. We'll be planting the seeds to eliminate the food desert. We'll be cultivating community, and we'll be harvesting relationships and partnerships of networking to make that a better place. So, again, that's Saturday from 8:00 to 6:00 at the old Walmart parking lot. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wheeler.
Ms. Rhonda Shirley.
Good evening, Ms. Shirley.
Good evening. My name's Rhonda Tomasina Shirley. I reside at 3514 Gazalia Circle, DJ here's District, District 4. I'm also a graduate and alumni of Fayetteville State University. Absolutely Bronco Pride, you know, homecoming's coming up, so we have lots of events, other than Battle of the Bands, coming up, so it's gonna be a great week next week, I just know it. I'm here tonight as a representative and the private investigator for Fayetteville Pack to speak upon not only the LGBTQIA safe place, but also to ask the council to take in consideration the LGBTQIA plus liaison position, to bring it back to the city of Fayetteville. As we speak about unity tonight and building bridges within our community, I think it is a great idea for that community to be represented. Talking to a few of my friends who are of same-sex relations, who have kids, were not aware of the curfew until I brought it to their attention or through conversations through other people, and they feel that they are left out. And with this, I believe that not only with a safe place for the LGBTQIA community, that we also need a liaison to either report to the mayor or the city manager or even the chief of police. My second motion for business tonight is to thank the chief of police for even attempting to do the curfew. At least somebody in Fayetteville is caring enough about the community to not just sit behind the desk, but actually get out there and see the real problem. From somebody who has grown up on Bunce Road, to lived on Murkison Road, to Southern Avenue in Massey Hill, and currently a resident of Bonny Doom, it is a problem. I've had a teenager break into my car using duct tape to where the alarm didn't even go off at 1:30 in the morning. Not only my car was vandalized, but other people's were vandalized. This was done by a 16-year-old. And if we can't implement a curfew for these children, to hold these parents liable for their actions, so we're just gonna let them run rampant in our streets while they can get ahold of an AR-15 or a Glock 9, where I can go down the street and actually buy it from them, but we can't hold the parents accountable? My third subject for tonight is Janice Dockery. A 12-year-old shot this little girl, and the gun was reported the day after the incident happened as stolen. But yet, we can't hold the parents accountable for that gun violence? But yet, we're standing here, and some of you are up for reelection talking about gun control, gun violence in the city. Why not this case? Why can't we bring forth, why are we not holding these parents responsible for their children's own actions? That's all I have to say.
Thank you, ma'am.
Now, Kovan, we've now surpassed the 30 minutes.
All right, let's see, one, two, three. All right, well, there were five speakers. Is it possible that it could be a continuation of the next meeting? I know we don't typically have the public forum, but once the council, you have a problem with continuing this, the next meeting, the five who didn't speak, kind of like the same format we did during the special meeting, where we just paused it where we left off? Yeah.
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Yes.
Not that I have a problem with it, but I'm gonna go back to the policy committee, and both my members are not here, so I'm going off what I remember. I do think, if I'm not mistaken, that we did a policy that it was held at 30 minutes? Was that? So, do we have to make an amendment to, because the policy is the 30 minutes?
Yeah, and that was gonna be my suggestion. I mean, I'm for hearing from them. I know that, you know, you have policies until we amend it and change it and provide for that, so. So, council, it's your pleasure. I would recommend that we continue it so we're consistent, you know, I just want to make sure there's consistency with it. And apologize for those who had signed up to speak tonight. We were trying to get it in as much as possible, but we can continue with it at number 14 at the next meeting, Madam Clerk. So, if you can give them preferential sign-on at number 14, starting with Rick Smith.
For the October 23rd meeting?
Yeah, very next meeting. I know we don't have a public forum, but we'll place an item there for continuation of it.
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right.
If I may, so we do not, that is the policy, correct?
Correct.
Okay, okay, so, okay, thank you.
And council, if you want to change it or provide some leeway, then you can take that up through the policy committee, and we'll bring it back. Ma'am?
So, does this need to be a vote?
No, it's just that we've moved on to the next item. So, thank you all, start, Mr. Smith, Mr. Hardy, Mr. Fowler, and I spoke to Mr. Fowler outside. I think his issue we may can talk through. Mr. Jones, Mr. Herbie, and Ms. Deanna Royal. Look forward to talking to you, Ms. Deanna. Much love for Operation Turkey, but we'll pick it up at the next meeting, I promise. All right. Ms. Hewitt, you have something?
If you would like as well, council, we can ask our council liaison, Michelle, to reach out to them tomorrow and gather information, and then we could also share it, or we can do it as well.
So, if they haven't had it resolved, or they just wanted to speak to the community, then they can.
Absolutely, we can do that. We can do both.
All right, thank you. All right. Thank you all for your comments, very good comments, so we appreciate hearing from you. Moving to item 9.0, it's the public hearing. Ma'am? Councilman Banks, McGlove?
Yes, is Matthew Jones still here? If he can raise his hand. Okay, I'll catch you out there.
All right. Public hearing. As we prepare to hold the public hearing, where the city council formally seeks your input, individuals desiring to speak in the hearing must have signed up to speak with the city clerk by name and address before the start of tonight's meeting. We will begin with a staff presentation and then move into the formal hearing. 15 minutes will be allowed for each side. Those in favor and those opposed to the items being discussed. Individual speakers are limited to three minutes each unless by previous arrangement a single spokesperson has been designated, in which case the spokesperson may use the entire 15 minutes. And when the clerk calls your name, please come to the podium. Please clearly state your name and address for the record, and then you may begin addressing the council. And again, similar to the public forum, you'll be notified at 30 seconds that your time has almost expired, and at conclusion of your time, you'll be notified. So, with that, I'll turn it over to you. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. My name is Janelle Rocket. I'm the interim marketing manager at Fayetteville Public Works Commission, and I'm here today to present a brief presentation on the preliminary assessment for project area 28 and 33 North, as well as the preliminary role for 24 B.C. This presentation has been revised slightly from the one that you have seen in the past. Hopefully, we've provided some information in here to address some of the frequent questions that we get during these presentations. So, for overview of the presentation, we've provided some information about the historical annexation. We'll go over the project areas, events that have happened to date, and any upcoming dates. We'll review the cost of property owners and financing options, and we'll advise the council on next steps that are needed. We've provided a Phase 5 annexation timeline dating back to 2005, between 2005, sorry, 2007 when construction began to 2023, there have been 24 projects that have been completed with 5,794 connections that have been made available. To give you an overview of where things were in 2008 when we began versus 2023, areas A1 and 2C were a total of 617 properties that cost approximately $10,726 per property to annex. We just finished 24 B.C., which we'll be talking about tonight. It was 190 properties at approximately $41,931 per property. As we go through annexation, we have these conversations, got a little bit of a flow for council this evening. We start with design. We move on to preliminary assessment to receive the go-ahead with the letters and the conversations with the residents. We'll go through construction and request for We'll go through construction and request approval for bids. We'll go through the transaction process once construction is completed. Once that has been done, we'll come back to city council to confirm the assessment role, and then we'll levy the assessments at that time. These are the 24 projects that have been completed, and these are the upcoming Phase Five projects that are in process. We'll can talk about 24 B.C. this evening. We have two that are currently in construction, one to set construction in the next couple of months. We have four that are in preliminary assessment, and then we have 11 areas that are currently in design. This evening, this is Project Area 28. This is Cliftdale West. It's located in District Eight. Councilmember Banks-McLaughlin. In addition, Project Area 33 North is Rayford Road Estates, District Seven, Councilmember McNair's district. Events to date, on August 23rd, 2021, the survey and appraisal notifications were mailed to property owners in 33 North. On November 22nd of 2021, survey and appraisal notification letters were mailed to property owners in Area 28. On May 8th of this year, council adopted the preliminary assessment resolution, and on the 26th of September, the copies of the resolution were mailed to the property owners. So we're now here this evening to ask for the preliminary assessment to be approved. Once that has been done, we will advertise for construction bids, and we will come back for approval for the bid recommendation and award. PWC will host the pre-construction meeting prior to beginning and then ending construction. Once that has been done, we will host another Community Connection meeting after construction has been completed. Once that has been done, we'll come back to city council to confirm the role and to confirm the assessments, and then we will host the community assessment meeting. Cost to property owners, the typical cost for a single residential lot is $5,000. All other properties, non-single-family residential, are charged a per-front foot rate of $55.56 plus the average lateral charge. And of course, for all property owners, there's no payment due until instruction is complete and the assessment rule is adopted by city council. For payment options, residents can pay in full. There's no interest charge within 51 days of the assessment. Financing options are available to all residents. They can elect up to a 10-year term. The rate of the loan is determined by city council. It's set based on the prime rate of the beginning of the fiscal year, not to exceed 8%. Customers can opt for annual or monthly installments, and there's no penalty for repayment. For those who qualify, financial assistance may be available for those through the city of Fayetteville, the Economic and Community Development Office. So for city council, for Areas 28 and 33 North, there's no action needed tonight. We request the resolution be undertaken via consent agenda on the November 13th meeting. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
All right. With that, we'll reserve the questions that I do have a question by a council member. We'll reserve that till we open the public hearing. So with that, I'll open the public hearing. Madam Clerk?
Ma'am, we have no speakers for this item.
All right. Councilmember Ingram, you had a question?
Mayor, how many times does this? Is this statutory that this has to keep coming up this way? I can count probably maybe, gosh, probably feels like over 10 times we've had to reiterate this. Why does this keep coming up? I mean, let's start there.
So the way this North Carolina general statute is written, only the city has been granted the authority to legislate, charter, or assess for city services, so PWC has no authority to do so. So every time we need to undertake these different areas, we have to come before city council for approval.
And so I do remember a conversation where we were interested in maybe, we were interested in maybe seeing about, you know, if there, I know there are payment plans. I wouldn't be interested in applying for a loan to pay for this, to be honest with you, if I was a resident, but in a way to kind of further subsidize this for residents. And I think also, looking at it, this happened so many years ago, and people still don't have connection. And it's just, I think for me, it would be very frustrating if I lived out there and this kept coming up in my face. Like, it would be very frustrating, especially if I don't have the services yet. So I just wanted to kind of put that out there. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman here.
Thank you, Mayor. You just showed the $5,000, I think, is that the connection fee?
That is the annexation assessment fee.
Yes. Okay. Now, I've heard this at a meeting a few weeks ago, someone stated the $5,000 amount. Could you tell us how far back that particular amount has been in place? And when I say far back, could you tell me as for it, as in years, how far back do you think the $5,000 assessment fee has been in place?
So councilman here, that was began in and around April of 2006. So the council in 2006 voted unanimous to assess that. Yes, sir.
And the only reason I hadn't stated that, Mayor, is because I had heard somewhere at one of our meetings, and someone had stated that it was a much more recent period that that amount came, but that goes all the way back at least to 2006, 2005. And I just wanted some clarification for that to be stated publicly. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. All right. You have a question? All right. So with that, we'll close the public hearing, and you said no actions needed at this time?
Not for Area 28 or 33 North, no.
All right. So moving on to item 9.02. Give it to you.
All right. So Area 24B, this is the area Village Hills, which is also located in District Eight. And then 24C is Kings Mills, also located in District Eight. Events to date, this is for the preliminary assessment role, so everything up through construction has been completed for this specific project. So in February 24, 2020, the survey and appraisal notification letters were mailed to property owners. In March 20, council voted to adopt the resolution directing the project be undertaken. Due to COVID, this was delayed until February of 2023. But in March of 2022, we held the construction meeting. It was a virtual meeting. In March of 2022, the construction was started, and it was completed in March of 2023. PWC hosted the Connection Community Meeting in June of 2023, and the Connection Notification Letters were mailed to property owners in June of 2023 as well. On September 11th of last month, council adopted the resolution declaring cost and preparation of the preliminary assessment role. So using our annexation steps, in this one, we're all the way down at the end, where construction has been completed, and we are now asking council to adopt the assessment role. Once everything's been confirmed in the consent agenda in November, after confirmation, the assessment notifications will be mailed to property owners in Area 24B and C, and within two weeks of confirmation, PWC will host the community meeting to discuss the assessments and the payments. Again, it's the same cost to property owners, same information about financing, and again, no action is needed tonight. We will request via consent during the November meeting to confirm the assessment role and to levy the assessments.
Thank you so much. With that, we will open the public hearing. Madam Clerk?
Ma'am, we have no speakers for this item.
All right. So we'll close the public hearing. Council, any questions? All right. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. Have a good night.
I did have one question.
Yes, sir.
How many more phases do we have to go? You know, this is going on since 2005, and I know PWC did it at the pace that they could, but I saw the inflationary increase was dramatic. You know, you could get five times the coverage in lot connections or parcels for $10,000 that you can today for $40,000. So the longer it goes, the more expensive it is. So how much further do we have to go?
So we've got currently, what is that, four, nine areas that are currently in process and an 11 that are currently in design. So...
And that will complete it?
That's it. Yes, sir.
Now, do they have? I was shocked because I thought all of these were West Fayetteville, but then I met a resident the other day in District Two that's not connected, but they were annexed back 40-plus years ago. So it's part of this East Fayetteville?
Correct. So there are some areas that were bumped up due to other construction requirements. So for example, the 295 Loop, we had to bump some things up within the schedule in order to accommodate for things in that area. So had to bounce around a little bit.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Oh, Councilmember Banks-McLaughlin, you had a question?
Well, thank you, Mayor. And thank you for the presentation. I know West Fayetteville, we've had a lot of annexation, and I know residents in the area, of course, was happy to receive service, however, upset about paying the installation fee. In the past, I've, you know, requested if we could change that amount, but unfortunately, we were unable to because some council members felt that it would be unfair to other residents who had to pay that amount. But can you tell us approximately how much PWC spends on these projects? Or the percentage?
The last two projects that we completed that I presented in April, so hold on, I'll tell you exactly.
And I ask that just so the community can hear, like, them paying the $5,000, which they can finance, but how much money is going towards the installation from PWC as far as paying for it?
Correct. So Area 24A, which was Cliftdale Estates, total cost of sewer was 4.7 million. Cost per lot was $51,999. The residents were assessed $5,000, and PWC paid $46,999 per lot. For the area before that, which was Area 24A, I view that was Rayconda, total cost was just shy of $6 million for 92 lots, so total cost per lot was approximately $65,000. The residents were assessed $5,000, and PWC paid the rest.
You're welcome. I was going to say, thank you for sharing that so the residents can know that they're not the only ones that's footing the bill. PWC is covering the majority of the cost. Thank you.
But one caveat before I go to Councilmember Benevente. PWC also assess the fees on this forever and ever and ever, correct? So they'll eventually get that difference back, correct? This is a service you provide through that.
Well, so customers who have, everybody is allowed the ability to connect, but not everybody does connect. So of the approximate 5,800 lots that have been added into the services, approximately half have connected.
But development will fill it in over time and will help offset the cost of installation, right?
I unfortunately don't have an answer for that. I'm so sorry.
All right. Councilmember Benevente, you had something real quick?
Thank you, Mayor Colvin. Could you pull up the last slide that you just showed us that had a kind of a heat map or a map of stuff that's still to come?
Oh, this one.
I'm waiting for it to show up on my screen now. Because I'm pretty sure it is. Yes, it is. Do you see that little bit off of Rose Hill and Ramsey?
Yes.
Yes, a little bit to the left. Yeah, that one. Talk to me about that area.
I will be happy to address you. We can speak afterward.
Thank you. That's it, Mayor Colvin.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, council motion to adjourn. Y'all have a good evening.